At 6:30 PM, if we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public comment? Go with the board first, we have any board comment? Any public comment? Is this Nathan?
No.
Appointments at 6:35, we have Whitteman and Bingham Associates to talk of 357 Electric Avenue. Hi Jamie.
Hello everybody. For the record, my name is Jamie Rowe from Whitteman and Bingham Associates. My client is Mr. Joseph Russo, property owner, owns a piece of property on Electric Avenue here in town. It's the former site of the Whalen Drive-In. And if it's okay, I'll just pass a couple plans around. In light of the planning board in the town of Luenberg considering medical marijuana dispensary, and you're updating your zoning regulations to allow this.
Just walk through.
Peter Walken, yep.
Just to let you know.
Thank you. Considering that you're going to be talking about this in a few weeks, and considering some bylaw changes, I'm not quite sure if they're going to be by right uses listed in your zoning code, or if they're going to be zoning overlay districts, I'm not quite sure, but I'd like to bring to your attention a piece of property that we would like to consider to be part of this new bylaw, if possible, and that's the former site of the Whalen Drive-In.
Sure.
It's about 15, 16 acres. Everybody, if you remember the site, it was clear cut, paved, and it's a great location right off of Route 13. It has municipal water, municipal sewer. If you remember, a couple of years ago, I made a presentation before the town meeting, changing the boundary, the sewer district boundary, and including the majority of the site, and the town voted that in, so the entire site now can be sewed, which it couldn't be a couple of years ago. So, I wasn't sure if you wanted to have a dialogue about this or not, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention, so that when you do have a conversation about it, maybe you can take a look at the site between now and then, and maybe consider this as part of your zoning change. That's all.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Jamie?
Just out of curiosity, I know the last time you came before, I think you were looking to put two or three buildings on there with three different uses?
Correct.
And nothing ever became of that?
It did, it did. In fact, this would fit into those plans. There are three buildings, right now we're doing some conceptual site design, three buildings, two buildings, there's going to be commercial space in the front, also medical, again, there's going to be building, hopefully it could be a medical marijuana dispensary in the back, and self-storage.
Absolutely.
So there's three uses, we can do that via an A&R plan, and all three uses can be sewed, watered, and everything works out just fine. So that, you're absolutely right. I think I brought that plan before you quite some time.
Yeah, that was quite a while ago, so I was just curious as to where that had gone.
Yep. Spaces are filling up over there, so that's a good thing. Economy's back a little bit.
Yes.
Thanks Jamie.
Okay, thank you guys.
Questions? Alright, thank you.
Have a good night.
Oh, Nathan does, Jamie. Jamie?
Jamie?
One more, Nathan has one question.
Thanks a lot for, you know, bringing this to our attention ahead of time, it's real helpful to understand what people are interested in doing, and, I don't know, just speaking for myself and not the board, I mean, we've discussed a number of options, you asked some questions earlier, and we have some plans that are underway for proposals to bring to public meetings and whatnot, but we're not, we haven't nailed everything down, but, you know, I think it's, in a lot of our discussions, somewhere like you're talking about is, could be a pretty attractive place, and, I guess, question, I don't think you have to answer this, but I'm curious, is you and your client engaged with the state yet in the licensing register process? Okay.
Not yet, not yet.
Well, thanks a lot.
Any others? That's not till 6:50, so we have some time, so I'm going to move over to number five, because, oh well, we can go, I'm sorry, to number four. Signing of 419 Sunny Hill Road, we have an A&R here to sign, they came in front of us two weeks ago. And Marjorie did get, it was circulated to all the town departments. The Board of Health, it meets all requirements, the building inspector meets all requirements. It looks like it's going to need a notice of a tent for 100-foot buffer, 30-foot buffer, but they have it on their agenda. Board of Health, they have no issues. And the sewer. This area is in the sewer service, so it came back from all the boards fine.
I'll make a motion that we approve the plan for 419 Sunny Hill Road.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Not for me.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 An aye, so we can sign that as we're going. Next, we have minutes approval for 22414.
I make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of February 24th, 2014.
Thank you Toby, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? I know you had sent...
I think she was going to make some minor corrections.
Yeah, which she did.
Awesome.
So, we're all set on that?
Yes, thank you.
No, not at all. So, all in favor of the minutes of 22414?
Aye.
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 An aye, and those are getting passed down. And then we have the executive minutes. Okay, and I'll pass, we have to read those, those aren't emailed, so I sent that there for you to read. And Matthew, while that's going down and being circulated, could you talk about committee reports, MJTC?
That's next week, it's a monthly meeting, so we have not met since our last planning meeting.
Okay, perfect. MRPC, I have no report, our meeting is in two weeks. School Building Committee, Nathan?
I don't have a report, we have a meeting tomorrow.
Okay. Building Reuse Committee, Damon McQuade.
I'm sorry.
Back to Nathan.
Did you attend the workshop?
I did.
Okay, do you want to maybe talk about that? I'd be interested, maybe the others will be too.
Yeah, that was number seven.
Oh, sorry, okay, we got it there, that's great.
Yeah, that is on the agenda for number seven, so we'll do it there.
Cool.
Damon, Building Reuse?
So, we had another meeting, first one in a while, last week, and we're reorganizing, it was basically an organizational meeting to talk about where we're going from here, and talking about how many members we're going to proceed with, so, we're going to keep the nine members, we have one opening, that we're looking for a citizen-at-large, I think, and someone with a real estate or construction background, or law background to help out, and we'll be moving forward.
Alright.
And actually, one more thing is, it's going to be important for us, once we're done with the medical marijuana thing, to talk about how we're going to do the village district, because the zoning of the center of town has a lot to do with the uses that would be possible for those buildings that we're talking about. So, they're going to put pressure on us to move forward with that as soon as we can.
Okay, sounds good, yes.
So, this is great news, thanks for the update, Damon, things moving forward, is there any kind of like new, it sounds, are there kind of some new kind of assumptions about where things are going, like in terms of some of the different town assets, as you're kind of going into this new phase?
We are sticking with what we talked about in the past, we didn't have any further conversation on that at our last meeting, but we will be talking about it more as we go forward.
Okay, so it's still pretty fluid?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, thanks a lot.
Okay, Capitol Planning, Marion's not here, Green Task, Marion's not here, and back to Matthew on Agricultural Commission.
Yeah, same thing there, they'll be meeting next week, it's a monthly.
Alright, the next we have Planning Director Reports, the first one is the Middle School, High School Project Regulatory Review Meeting, I did attend that for Marion on last Wednesday over at the TC Passios, at 11 o'clock. It was really their first meeting, so they talked about planning, and they're going to do a modified site plan review with us, as a municipal building, they do not have to do a full-fledged site plan review, so I did give them the form, I brought the form for them, and all the material, they would need to do that, so they are going to do that. All departments were there, they're going to have individual meetings with the fire and the police, because they have a lot of safety concerns, and the fire concerns, the engineer, they spoke, the electrical people, so it was a really good first meeting, and they'll come in front of us, they're hoping, in two to four weeks, that they'll be looking to come in front of us. I explained to them that it's not a long process, it's not that they have to be on the agenda months before that we meet, I explained what days we meet, so it was a good meeting, they're very organized over there. Mike Macklin and Loxy are very involved with them, so.
Great, yeah, thanks for the update on that. You gave us some information in the last meeting, Joanna, about, you would ask Councilor, Marjorie, or someone, for some information about the nature of the site plan review in this kind of situation, do we have further definition around like what?
Well, that's what they're saying, is that the mass, they don't have to do a full-fledged site plan review where it's a municipality, but have other eyes look at it, isn't a hindrance?
Got it.
That they recommended, Mike recommended, and they agreed, that they would do just a modified site plan, that would still give us the plans that would go to the seven, they would give their feedback, like we've always done.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Yeah, no, not at all, you are welcome. Okay, so that was that. Highfield Village was just a verbal update. Kent from Highfield Village should be dropping off the full large plan set by Thursday, the small plans have been distributed to departments, but we're looking for the three big to have a tech review meeting, just as an informational, where the fire chief, police chief are new, so that should be coming to the office Thursday. Force Corp. at 305 Lemminster Shirley Road, there's no report. Subdivision, 50 Elmwood Road, endorse approval, alright. Jamie, do you want to come up?
Jamie Rowe from Whitteman and Bingham Associates, we submitted an extension letter for tonight, asking that this item on the agenda be passed over, and granted a two-week extension till the 24th of March, so that we can deal with the issues on that date.
Okay, and I do have the letter of extension from Jamie for the file, so we're just going to move that out till the 24th.
Are you representing both parties?
No, I'm representing the applicant.
Okay, and that would be?
Mr. Crowley, yes, at all times.
And we do have an email from...
The property owner?
The property owner, asking the same thing. Mr. Ewing, Mark Ewing, had sent an email today, asking if we could put it off till the 24th meeting.
So, we're putting off...
Signing the findings and directives.
Okay.
We signed the bylaw our last meeting.
Okay.
And just the finding and directives, they've asked that we put that off until the March 24th meeting.
Okay.
And they, all parties agree.
Just want to make sure that they're, my name is Peter Campabasso, I represent Mr. Crowley. I just want to make sure that there will in fact be a meeting on the 24th.
Yes.
Because I think we're getting close to the 135 days.
Exactly.
And I wouldn't want it to give the board an opportunity.
And that's what Jamie and I talked about today.
Okay.
Yes. And the March 24th meeting is a public meeting, they're all public, but on TV.
And you'll have an agenda that evening?
Yes, same as tonight.
In addition to the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Campabasso. Thank you Jamie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. Alright, so that is all set.
So, Joanna, I mean just about that, so we're just, we're not, we're getting close, but we're not in danger of constructive approval at this point?
No.
Okay, excellent, thanks.
Just to that point, I believe where they've requested the waiver and we're granting it, it does, it stops that and extends it for a period of time.
That's why we asked for it in writing, if the applicants ask for it.
So it kind of puts the overall process on hold for that period of time?
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, just, I actually have a question about the findings and directives, I don't know, they look good overall. Is it always implied in the findings and directives that, so, that the project will be built according to the submitted drawings? So, for example, like, you know, it said, you know, like with the tree plan stuff, they made some modifications on the drawing, which was great, and we waived the tree plan, and it even said, you know, we'll be like, it is on the tree, is it, is it, just refresh my memory here, is we go, in general, when we approve a plan, if the project were to deviate from the plan, it would have to come back?
Yeah, well, a couple of things could happen. If it's a material change to the plan, it may cause there, the need for there to be another public hearing.
Okay.
If it's something as minor as having, doing a field change?
Yep.
Something that can be fielded, move, want to just move a lot line a little bit, or what have you, those things can be done in the field, and those wouldn't require a public hearing or anything like that, so, but for all intents and purposes, once we've signed the A&R, once we do the findings and directives, the expectation is it will get as planned, and with all the findings and directives that have been outlaid.
Gotcha.
And that's the building officials' responsibility to ensure that the directives are met.
And that's why Stone Farm has come in front of us when they've gone from a three to a two?
Yep.
Because the plan said a three, and now they're going to a two, and Emerald had done that with the beach where they were going to have?
Yep.
The house, and they changed that.
Okay, great, so, okay, so, I get it about the findings and directives, but also it's implied that the plan will largely be followed as well?
Yes.
Okay, beautiful, thanks a lot for clarifying.
Okay, so now, I'm just going to go back to the minutes of the executive session, we all read them.
Just maybe for pointing for clarification, if there is a required to be a field change, it's typically done with the designing engineer and our reviewing engineer having that dialogue and conversation, and then our reviewing engineer and the designing engineer would provide us that information.
They usually would send a letter.
Right.
Okay, thanks, that's great.
Okay, back to the minutes of executive session, we just need to approve those, if everybody was okay, did everybody have a chance to read them?
Yes.
So I would make a motion to accept the executive minutes as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 An aye.
Do you want to go back to our 6:50 appointment?
Is it 6:50?
Yes.
Yes, I will. At 6:50, A&R for Goldsmith Priest in Ringwall, at 265 Pleasant Street. Good evening, how are you?
For the record, my name's David Brauchek, I'm the survey manager with Goldsmith, Preston, Ringwall, here on behalf of 265 Pleasant Land LLC, otherwise known as the solar field behind the Baptist Church.
Okay.
I don't know, the attorney, I believe, was originally intended to drop off the stuff this morning, it didn't happen, so I have the Form A, the check, the abutters list, the original implant.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect. We will take those in.
And what are we being asked to do here?
He's going to walk us through that.
Walk us through it.
Quick and simple, little A&R, would you like it?
We put it right on Nathan, where he's in the middle.
Our parcel is the larger, 47 acres, and we're cutting off a small parcel along the sideline, and then even smaller parcel at the street line, reducing our frontage by about 10 feet, we still have a surplus of about 600.
Okay, and that line is coming in what direction?
Both of these parcels are to be considered not building lots, and for conveyance to an abut.
So, is it coming from?
It's coming from here, and going here.
So, the line originally went where?
Straight.
Straight across, okay, so you're coming this way?
Yes.
I guess my only question is, is the movement of this line relative to the solar panels, does it have any impact on the setback requirement?
Absolutely not, the solar panels are further back.
Okay, just want to make sure that we don't break anything in the process.
It's a bigger issue, understood.
Okay, alright, then I'm good.
Okay, so do we have any other board comment on that, any questions?
Well, that looks relatively straightforward, just to say it's going to go through the process as usual.
That goes inside it, I think they wrap that, so it all stays together?
Yeah, I'm just, I don't know if it's appropriate to ask, but I'm, and, you know, if it's not, don't answer, but I'm kind of curious, you know, given that, you know, there's only so much I can see from the 2D map as it is, is there anything interesting kind of driving these small conveyances?
Yes, but it'd be better if you agreed to endorse, vote one way or another, that'd be more liberty to discuss it.
Okay.
It's not relative to the approval process, but I can, I'll chat in such.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay, that's fine, thank you.
Well, if I can draw anything from just looking at the plan, it seemed like there was a driveway encroachment?
Right, that's what I thought it was, was a driveway.
From the possum?
That's exactly the case, there's the driveway that crept across the line.
So.
His driveway is on, so they're making it whole, they're making everybody whole.
We're cleaning up an encumbrance, if you will.
Yeah, so they're making it nice, so.
Yes. Alright, so what will happen is we'll take this, is there any public comment? Okay.
The board is all set.
Yeah, we'll take this under advisement, it'll go to all the town boards, two weeks, they usually have all their literature back again, it's straightforward, it's just cleaning up, so his driveway is on his land.
I'll hear from Marjorie, I'm sure.
Exactly.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Yeah, and then we'll sign, you probably don't even have to come unless we have questions, and Marjorie would tell you that.
Yep.
If any of the other departments, if it's conservation or anything like that, that's an issue, she would let you know that, otherwise, if they all come back, fine, we sign it, and you're good to go.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, nice meeting you. And nice to see you again.
Between you guys, man.
We missed you.
Last time for a while.
We missed you.
Huh?
We missed you.
Please, we're going forward this time.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too.
My review.
Very good, I'm David, I'm sorry.
I'm Phil. Crazy, I'm probably there.
White Woods, we're on page two, I don't know if you guys are on page two, I'm on page two, White Woods, no report, Emerald Place, no report, 651 Chase Road, update of site work, and that was scanned to you of just the solar field?
Yeah.
They're following their weekly schedule. Pleasant installing racking for modules, module delivery start this week, Chase Road, site work around perimeter of solar field, underground trenching and conduit going, small site racking is being installed, large site racking posts are being installed, module delivery start this week. So those are the two updates on the solar fields, and I was, if EPG, I was telling Toby, they started their solar field now in Shirley, the town of Shirley, I don't know if you're familiar, the Shirley exit, where the airport diner is, and the old Shirley Airport, it's right over there, it's something to see, and that's going there, if you ever want to take a ride over and look at that.
The people that move solar, the new, because they want that parcel.
Alright, so now we're into the draft RMD, to continue the work on the marijuana bylaw. So, Marjorie taped up our current drafts that we made from the last meeting and sent that back out, she did book our public hearing, and sent notice out for that for March 24th, so we all saw that, so that's all set to go. Good evening Paula. And now, we're just looking to what else we want to add before we have it scheduled to go to Town Council tomorrow. Does everybody have their, is everybody ready, anybody have thoughts, questions?
I don't think I got that one, Joanna.
Do you have an extra copy, please?
I don't, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, oh, yeah, is this, oh, this is not the edited, is this the edited one? No, this is...
Oh, I do, I'm lying.
Well, I have a copy, we can...
Yeah, no, we got enough.
I think you want this one, what's that?
With the white highlights.
Oh, I haven't seen that one.
Okay.
I don't know what this one is, do you have one more?
Do you have one?
I guess that was the email.
Oh.
No, I got one.
No, no, but do you have the annotated one? Beautiful, we all have our own.
And then you sent an email.
Yes, and I have one minor thing since that time, that, well, it's not minor, it's something to discuss as well, it's not, anyways.
Okay, well, go ahead, don't bring in.
Let me just catch up real quick here.
She added the buffer strips with all the setbacks that we had from solar, remember we asked her to do that, and then we could look at those numbers?
Okay, yeah, 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 I got to catch up with all this stuff, because she made
So, we'll just start, is everybody all set with the first page? Because really, for me, I wanted to go into the setbacks and buffer strips, but let's just see if we're all set with the first.
Well, I'm all set, but there were all three Nathan's questions. Okay, yeah, go ahead, I'm all set with page one there for now, Joanna.
So, two hundred feet in the residential conservation restriction shall be fifty feet in commercial and industrial districts unless it abuts a residential conservation restriction district, in which case the buffer strip shall be two hundred feet in depth along such abutting lot lines unless the applicant can demonstrate in the planning board finds that adequate buffering can be provided in a narrower buffer strip. Setbacks in all districts, front yard, side yard, rear yard. So those were the numbers that we usually work with.
Yeah, with the, with the addition of the, I think, so the reason it's called out specials, 'cause we got the special provision about the two hundred feet on the residential, okay, that's great.
Yes, and does that work for everybody? Is, is two hundred sufficient? Are you okay with that?
Um, yeah, but I still don't, I still haven't found a conservation district in the town. Do we have a conservation district? I don't believe we do.
I don't know if so much district as...
It's written there, so...
Yeah, well, it's Recreation District, yeah.
So was there a specific district that that was supposed to be applying to, or is it just in there erroneously on its own?
What's this, what do you?
The buffer strip, second sentence where it says residential conservation, I'm assuming...
Well, it's one, two, two spots, and then it continues down. One, two, three.
Hello?
Yeah, so there's, there's five instances in fourteen six, four point sixteen.
Right, she's just calling them districts, residential district, I, I don't think she's saying there's a conservation district. I think she's just referring to...
Okay, but what are we gonna suggest that's done about it?
I'm sorry?
Are we gonna suggest that we do anything about it, or are we just gonna leave it in there and have it printed the way, I mean, there is no conservation district in the town of Lunenburg.
Unless she's inferring the conservation land.
Right, which is what I, I think it's, but we can have her check on that, yes.
Well, this is, this is our directive, right, so what do we, what do we think that that should be?
Let's have her run it by Joel when he reviews it, and just call it to his attention, and see if he thinks we should insert the word, you know, land or something there, 'cause it's, if we don't have a formal district called that, that seems like a good thing to check with legal.
Right, and I think she's just signifying, for example, if you go down fifty feet in a commercial or industrial district, I, I think she's just referring to units as districts. I'm not, I don't think she's saying they're specific, but we can have that checked.
Yeah, absolutely, and it might be fine the way it is, and if not, we can just tweak it.
Is there anything in here about screening?
The design standards, four point sixteen point seven contain guidelines around screening. The state guideline, the state guidelines actually have some things that sort of conflict with the local guidelines around screening, so in the process, any kind of sighting of this project would have to navigate, you know, the intent of the state and the design, and the design standard bylaws, kinda similar to like, in this, uh, this project we just had come before us, the one, uh, Forest Corp., where our design bylaw specified, you know, if possible, you know, have these bushes in front of the building or whatever. And we said, well, that's gonna have a, cause a traffic problem, we're gonna waive that. In this case, yeah, we're gonna have issues where the state has specifically said, we don't want screening in the parking lot for safety reasons in certain situations, so there might be certain types of screening where we might waive the design bylaw standard because of the more important goal of the state standard.
This is our design bylaw, right?
This is, this should be a reference to...
This is referencing our design.
Reference to this design standards.
Okay.
So does the, the, back to the two hundred, five and fifty, do those numbers work? Is everybody amendable, agreeable to those numbers?
I'm assuming the fifty, just to, just a sanity check, is that the standard commercial setback?
Yes.
That's fine, I mean, I think when we review commercial stuff, we might wanna shrink that, but I think, for now, we wanna leave it the same, so, cool.
Okay. Everyone else?
Did we decide not to include the residential uses separate from the district? Like, if there's a residence in the middle of a commercial district, do we wanna have a twenty, do we wanna have a two hundred foot or a fifty foot?
It's in the commercial district, it's fifty feet. A residential property exists in the commercial district, the commercial district setback requirement would be the only one that needs to be met.
So, that's what we're comfortable with? Okay? Just bringing it up there.
Yeah, but it's a good point, I mean, the, if it goes through like this, with special permit process, you know, we will have the ability to address extenuating circumstances.
But if you've got it in black and white, it's fifty feet, you can't make it larger?
Uh, in special permit process, we probably could if we had ample justification. Or we could do something special with screening there, and have enhanced screening requirements, so that's, that's assuming this bylaw makes it through the, you know, the, the whole process with the town, and special permit remains intact.
Okay.
Well, if I'm reading this correct, and maybe I'm misinterpreting it, the side yard, each side yard setback shall be at least fifty feet, however, provided, however, that when the lot is in a residential outline or recreation district, or abuts a residential conservation or recreation district, the side yard setback shall not be less than two hundred.
His point was, a residential home that resides in a commercial district.
Oh, not one that abuts.
Not one that abuts.
I apologize.
It's when it resides within the commercial district.
Okay.
And if you start doing that, you would probably, for all intents and purposes, eliminate lots that exist in the commercial dis, district from being viable. Okay?
Yeah.
And that person that owns that residential dwelling may have that law.
Now, the other thing to think about with a two hundred foot buffer is, two hundred feet is one, one side of a square acre. So if you've got two hundred foot setback from the front, two hundred foot setback from each side, and two hundred foot setback, that, that limits these to something greater than a four acre lot.
Yeah, that would be, yeah, we ran into that, 'cause this is actually the same setback we did with the solar project, but, um...
Well, the solar is...
In this case, it's kinda unlikely, it's relatively unlikely that you're gonna be at a corner, you know, like, it, the worst you'd probably get would be, like, half of the square acre. It'd be unlikely that, like, I don't know, Toby, maybe you...
Do you have the, our zoning bylaw book with you?
I have it right here.
'Cause I thought one of the things that we were specific about with the solar bylaw was the acreage, the lot size.
I don't know, that's a good question, maybe we were.
I thought we were.
We might have been.
I have to refresh my memory.
If we weren't specific about the acreage, the two hundred foot setback certainly created an implicit...
Because what we attempt, what we were attempting to do with the solar bylaw was to get it, if it was going to be in a residential district, to get it so that there was enough screening around it, so that it would be more centralized to the center of the lot, that was the intent, so it wouldn't be visible from the street. So I believe that, I thought we had put something in there that, relative to the overall lot size, so...
Yeah, I guess, I mean, the thing, the issue that, that Matt raises, it's kind of interesting to think about in this respect, like, just hypothetically, if you run this, against some data for lots, commercial lots, we have, I guess the one thing that gives me a little pause about it is, our commercial districts tend to be narrow strips off of main roads.
Exactly.
Whose backsides are going to abut residential. And so unless those lots are pretty deep, um...
So, when we were looking at doing the solar bylaw, and we were talking about large-scale ground-mounted facilities, those installations may be located on any lot containing more than twenty acres.
Yep.
So by being more than twenty acres, the two hundred foot setbacks from each, was it the adequate thing?
Yes.
And, let me see if we did a similar piece. And I think the small scale was more intended for the resident, regular residential piece, so there wasn't that requirement. I think we just went twenty, twenty-five feet or, yeah. Yeah, it couldn't be closer than twenty-five feet, so for a large-scale property, we made it two hundred, so I don't know if there's some level of consideration we would need to take for a grow facility.
In terms of overall?
The overall setback requirement of two hundred feet, 'cause we, in this particular bylaw, in this instance, there's no specificity as to the, to the size of a lot, right?
Yeah, well, we would probably not be, you know, if we rendered the site, if we rendered the use untenable, we would probably be forced to waive the requirement for cultivation on a, on a farm, on a qualifying farm.
I'm not familiar enough with what the state law says to what, what the size of a grow field can be, a commercial field, so... I don't know if any of you recall what the state has.
I, I can't.
Did they, did they set any limitation on the size of a grow field?
I don't know about the field in terms of acreage, I think they did probably set some caps on overall production.
We ought to take that as an action item to see what, what it is, if there's a limitation on the size of a grow field.
Well, I think as Joel indicated, council, I think he indicated that the state's outlook on this is that they combine, that they don't separate the two, cultivation and distribution, the RMD is the overall, that, and it, because the questions we brought up to him about regulating them separately was news to him. What was... Do you recall what it was that triggered him to realize, oh, that's, that's a different question than I've heard, 'cause that, that was...
That was the first question.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I don't think that's, I, I hear what you're saying, and actually Joel answered that one here, and he said it, his answer was basically that what we wanted to do was, was okay. But, but I don't know, I don't think that had a direct bearing on Toby's question, which was, you know, what's the maximum, is there, you know, what's, are there regulations of the amount of cul, land for cultivation, I think we'd have to look that up.
Yeah, I think we need to look that up and get that answer. Because if the state allows a grow field, limits its size, and says, then it can't be greater than some land use, and it's only limited to five acres then, it may be untenable to have a two hundred foot setback in a, in a residential area, so I think we need clarity on that, on that point.
Yeah, I mean, what do you think, I don't have a yardstick with me, but what do you, I mean, like, let's say Chase Road, I mean, a lot of Chase Road, the...
Yeah, but let's also remember, part, part of the issue with the solar field was the aesthetic sighting of the solar field.
Sure.
I don't know that you have that same, uh, question to be, to be vetted here, because looking at marijuana plants is substantially different than looking at solar plant panels, so I don't know.
Yeah, so in, in that regard, um, maybe we should, I guess where I'm going with this is, I, 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 you know, I appreciate the intent of what we were thinking when we put this in, but I'm not, I think we may just wanna, at least for the retail, and possibly for the cultivation as well, not... At least for the retail, I don't know that we wanna change the setbacks from what the underlying district are, 'cause I think they could render, like, similar with the residential, you know, you think, render a lot of potential sites not viable.
Well, I think from a retail perspective, we were limiting it to the commercial district, right?
Yes.
The, the grow facility could be anywhere, so...
Yeah, so maybe we should condition this for the grow.
So, yeah, that's...
And maybe, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think that's the point, is we need to understand that a little bit clearer, but, I think the intent's right, so...
I think the intent is right, and maybe if, if two hundred's not viable, so if two hundred's viable, we ask for two hundred, otherwise, you know, try to make it as central to the property and unobtrusive as possible, or something, some language like that. Great. But definitely, can we make a record that we don't want this to apply to the retail part of it? The setback, don't apply setbacks to retail, research the limitations, any research with the laws to say about limitations of production, and consider, consider amending it, so after, consider amending it so that it just applies to grow usage, and there it talks about, actually, I would say limit even to grow on farm, because do we care about grow and industrial? So just, it'd just be grow in residential, and then if, if the two hundred foot setback is prohibitive, then just ask that it be, you know, you know, whatever.
What are those numbers to make it prohibitive?
What, what are those numbers to make it prohibitive?
Right, based on what, what the smallest one would be, what would that number be? If it's five, if it's five acres, what would that setback be?
Yeah, it's gonna depend on the lot shape and a bunch of things, right? So, so in those events, you know, to do something reasonable that achieves the goals of minimizing impact on the neighborhood or whatever.
Okay. So that's all set, so we're down to design standards? We added that?
Yeah, well, she, yeah, Marjorie had had sort of a, a repeat of it, and now she's edited to just make a reference to it, which actually is what I requested, and I'm, I'm really happy with it.
Okay, security, um, unarmed...
For security...
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Damian.
I'm still not that big on the armed security guard, and I'm not even sure if Joel's gonna say that's legal, okay, for us to say that someone needs to have staff, but, um...
And I thought we were talking about in the distance, in the, the situations where it was over on, like, if the industrial over on Lomond Street Shirley Road, where that was so far away from the police station, I didn't realize we were doing all.
So even to me, even there, it seems more than our...
But I'm just, it was Nathan's, and I thought my interpretation was the far out ones.
And what I was getting at, this kind of wraps up. An armed, an armed security plan shall be required for all RMD locations and approved by both Lunenburg Fire and Police Chiefs, and submitted to the Planning Board. I wanna make sure, if we don't include the armed security guard part, I still wanna have their security system and fire protection system reviewed by Police and Fire Chiefs respectively.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think she has that in there, too. Let's see.
It sounded like they're lumped together whenever it's...
That's another one of those kind of areas where I think we need to be clean and green in what we mean by an armed security plan. Now, what is that, what is that? How do we define it?
Yeah, so to me, I mean, the security system, 'cause when the chief came in and talked to us, he brought the point where they know better than the person setting up the cameras, what angles you should have, 'cause you can have all the cameras in the world, but if they're wrong place, they're not gonna help you catch the criminal.
Right, and the, and the CMR, I, I happened to look at the security page again today, and they have three pages of that, they have to... and they have three pages of that, they have to be able to see every view, it has to be going 24 hours a day, it has to record, there has to be a DVD of, of every day on file, there has to be, you have to be able to be able to take a picture within minutes of anything that happened. So the state itself has two pages of what the security system has to be able to do.
I would still like to have the chief have the final review of it.
And that would be the add-on, is that all security is to be worked and approved by the fire and police chiefs in the town.
Yeah, and we can get that in this section. I thought it was in here already, but we should definitely, I think as Damon and Toby were saying, bust that out separately.
Mm-hmm.
About the armed, you know, you asked, you know, how did we get to that, and you were, originally, we had talked about, you know, originally, we talked about only doing it in districts that we felt were in close proximity of the public safety building. At our last meeting, Toby was at, too, and we discussed it some more, and there was two things. There was one, a desire to allow it to be in more places, and also a recognition of the fact that, given, even, given the limited nature of our resources for, you know, police, and I believe the specific number cited was two patrol cars out at a given time, that, given that those cars could be anywhere, that even just being near to the public safety building wasn't in and of itself necessarily a huge guarantee of protection.
Right.
And that's where, that's, I think that's how we ended up, that's how we ended up making it just about anywhere. Now, I guess, you know, just one thing, is I was thinking about this was over the weekend a bit, and I hear what Damon's saying about, you know, you know, I, we'll have to find out if we're authorized right now, I think, you know, to do, if we, if we're even empowered to put that kind of requirement in there, and if we are and we wanted to, one thing I'd like to look into is, do we have to put something in there about it being a requirement for the continued operation, or is this language good enough, like, you know? But the other thing I'm think, I've thought about is that, you know, the, the whole point of that provision is, we've discussed it in our conversations, has been to avoid problems that may arise from this kind of special nature of this facility right now, and its context in the overall legal framework. I mean, basically, the biggest problem being, it's potentially a cash business with a huge amount of cash, and almost guaranteed that any customer pulling in that lot has a lot of cash on them, and that is, is, has been seen in California, you know, could be, could create some problems that aren't typical, even for banks where, you know, maybe only 10% of the customers coming in have significant cash on them or whatnot. I, you know, I think this is a pretty serious thing, I don't, you know, I think we got to go through public hearing, hear what people think, you know, really vet this with the police chief to understand whether he feels an armed guard is going to increase or decrease public safety. But if we were to go forward with it, I think it would be good to condition it and only make it required, given the changing, things that are changing, you know, like the directive that the administration recently filed that says, oh, they, banks won't be punished for doing businesses. Joel said that's going to take a while to kick in, but if a business is somehow, maybe Massachusetts state law made a provision, maybe the town set up some provision, if they were able to operate, if they were able to process credit cards and accept checks, I wouldn't see any need for this to be in place, so I would like to make it conditional on, they only would need this if they could not process credit cards and checks, basically. You know, that's, anyways, that's, sorry, babble on about that, but that's.
I just wanted to make sure that everyone listening and understands that our concerns of security aren't so much based on the fact that it's marijuana, it's based on the fact that it's a cash business, like you were saying.
Oh, right, and everybody's that, they're going to walk in buying $2,000 to $5,000 worth of marijuana.
Yeah.
Because they're getting their month's supply, and it's all cash.
You have elderly and ill people in there doing this.
Elderly, their sisters that are walking in to get this. So as, as the data shows, in California, people are getting robbed, and as we, in our last meeting, this came up, the, the mobile station on Lomont to Shirley Road had been held up for $250. And this is totally a cash business, cash on hand, and that's totally why this was made. We all under, yes.
Yeah, exactly, that's a great point. And if we can take, if somehow the business or somehow is able to take that issue off the table, we would be more than happy to take the requirement off the table.
And at last time we met, the banks still weren't taking the cash because it was illegal, and the federal banks could not take illegal money.
Yep.
So, and the state just fixed that, that issue just was resolved. So as these grow, these, these things are going to, so.
Yeah, over time, right, and then we won't have to, if we had that condition in there, we wouldn't have to amend the bylaw, they just notify us, hey, we're able to take credit cards and checks now, and the requirement gets, we don't have to update the bylaw if, you know, the situation moves forward more quickly.
Yeah, no, I, I totally understood the reasoning.
You know, so obviously, we can, should discuss anything else, anyone else's questions on, would it make sense to, to, for you, for one of us to read this whole thing to the public here? Because I think Marjorie's done a really good job putting this together, I think, as a board, you know, it's obviously, it took us some time because it's a really complex issue, and we had a lot of information to get, but I think what we have here is a pretty, a fairly elegant, concise document, and.
Well, we'll do it next week at the public.
At the public hearing, I was going to say, okay, if we want to give them a preview.
Yeah.
Well, we can, I would suggest that we post the draft online as well, on our page, on our planning page.
Yeah, we can do it as long as it's drafted.
That would be great.
As long as we have draft going through it, absolutely. And I did, I had a meeting with Kerry today, and we talked about that, and once we get our final thing, we're going to have it on the town website, we're going to have it on the planning website, so when we have the public hearing, we'll be able to refer everybody to that, because we were talking about the public hearing, and it's going to be a little difficult, because most of the bylaw is the CMR. Well, I'm not going to sit and read 58 pages of the CMR at that public hearing, so a lot of the, the public comment questions might be covered in the CMR.
Sure.
You know, on top of this three-page document. So that's where I'm still trying to figure out how we can accomplish all of that, so the public understands that that's the biggest part of our bylaw, is the CMR.
That's a great point. I mean, if we could post, like, in one of those folders in that public thing, a lot of the documents, including the CMR, including some of the presentations and sample bylaws for people to get access to if they're interested.
Yeah, well, that's what we were going to see, if we could make, you know, copies of the whole packet once approved, and have them at the planning office, have them at town hall, so if people want to come and read.
Pick them up.
They're there, they're accessible, to be able to read them before the public meeting, and, and then have the questions based off of that.
Yeah, that's, that's great.
I think if you were going to post this, we ought to also be posting the CMR.
Are with it.
And if there's also an FAQ that the state has, that answers some specific questions that would typically come up from a community, that should be posted as well. Because I'm sure there are some standard questions that people will be concerned about, you know, the location relative to, you know, churches, schools, and those types of things.
Absolutely.
So.
Yes.
Could I, I've been thinking about this a lot this week, the, you know, we're getting some really good coverage of our discussions, and the, the ledger's doing, and they had a, a good headline that really, I think, helped call attention to the issue, but I want to make sure that people kind of, I think the Board of Selectmen are talking about these issues as well. I just want people to really understand our perspective, as Damon was trying to do around, around this, this emphasis on safety, and it really, really being all about the safety, as Damon said, of the people who are using the, the RMD facility to get the medicine that they need, and the, the safety of people driving around the town of Lunenburg, and the safety of other neighboring people in the commercial district, and, you know, any of butters generally. If people have feelings, if they, if they feel like, you know, this is, you know, one way or the other, whether they think it's an overreaction to, that we're going too far on the public safety issue, or on the other hand, if they support this and feel this is an important issue, I, you know, I would encourage them very strongly to, to attend the public hearing and get their voice in, because this will be something that, it's, we got a public hearing coming up, we have the Board of Selectmen, and we want to ensure that we're going to shape our, and then there's town meeting, and the final decision will be shaped by the people who participate in those events, that will determine which way it goes. And we want it to go in a way that's most reflective of the goals of the people in the town of Lunenburg. The last thing, and this is me personally speaking, because we haven't discussed this as a board, regarding, you know, this potentially a, a significant provision, like, you know, if we did, if it turned out that we talked with the public, and the, the public safety officers, like the police chief, and we did feel it was a good decision to move forward, with something as serious as requiring armed guards, people, some, one perspective might be, well, that's an imposition on business owners, it's going to make it not attractive as a business. And I've been thinking about that the last few weeks as well. I guess what I would say about that is, I think, one thing we have to keep in mind is, although people can make money operating these, and that's, that's fine, these, Massachusetts set these up as nonprofit institutions with the primary goal to, to provide a valuable medical service to the public. The primary goal was not to, you know, money-making, they're set up specifically, they can only be a nonprofit institution. And furthermore, the state of Massachusetts has put in place, for legitimate, you know, well-intended reasons, anti-competitive regulation, which, which makes it much easier to make money in these facilities. So although, yes, if we did require armed guards, that would decrease the profit after all, it would, could possibly decrease the profit, it might increase it, because people might prefer to go to a safe one than an unsafe one. But it's possible, one can make a case that that's going to decrease the profit, because they got to pay an armed guard. I guess, I would say this, based on the numbers we're seeing, I don't think an armed guard would make the business non-viable, based on the rate that they will be able to charge, and are almost guaranteed to be able to charge, by the way the state has structured the law with the price fixing, where the prohibiting prices below a certain level. And so I, I think overall, this, you know, for entities who are entering this to do what the law was intended, which was to, on a nonprofit basis, provide a valuable service to patients in Massachusetts, I don't think this should be a major deterrent, and in some cases, may make this, the facility more attractive than other facilities. So, sorry for getting on the soapbox sometimes.
Okay. And then we had that they'll be open to inspection by the fire department, police department, zoning, so that's good. Live contact should be available 24/7. Documentation, that the planning board should be copied on all documentation that occurs between the applicant and the state. That was one that we wanted to add, that is there. And that was it. So what else is in your thought process?
I have a, a comment on the design standards. Looking through the ones that we've got, we've got lighting, but no lighting plan required, and then we have landscape, and we have a landscape plan required. I think that it would behoove us to require a lighting plan for something like this, especially considering the hours of operation are most likely going to be before and after dark, and/or after dark, especially during the winter.
So, yeah, I think your point's well-taken. In this case, I would say that the state law is actually very specific about lighting, and, and we have a special permit process in place, so I think, I believe we would be able to take address, I'm not, you know, I'm pretty, you know, first of all, we could probably deal with the lighting and the findings and directives.
If I may.
Yeah.
There's, there's two design standards you need to take a look at, you'd need to look at the, the section that's dot 416 dot 7, design standards, and then there's also the things that are encompassed in 465. And I'm not sure, to be perfectly honest, that this is 416.7, unless this is an old book, but if you looked at design standards under section, what, in this book is 415.49?
Mine only goes up to 414. Hmm. Marion gave me, 12, May 12, May 2012.
Oh, that, excuse me, I'm in the, we have had design standards, and we have design standards. Who is the other one at?
The one that I was looking at specifically mentions the commercial district.
465, okay. I know we went to extensive.
The light.
On this one.
The lighting. Well, I guess my comment pertains to, landscaping is aesthetics, whereas a lighting plan is safety.
Okay, so, under what they call street furniture, talks about light fixtures, shall be designed to be a number in height that grants plentiful lighting, such lighting shall shine downward so as not to affect adjacent properties, side and street, outdoor tables, you know, so we have some latitude there.
Okay.
Okay.
But a lighting plan would, would give us definitive luminaire values in specific areas of the lot. I, I think we'd want to ensure that the parking lots were practically daylight.
Yeah, and the state requires that, basically.
Okay.
And I think we can certainly cover that in our findings and directives.
Yep.
And I think his point was taken.
Okay, Matthew, did you have anything else?
No, I think that covers my comments. Thank you.
Toby?
Okay, this is a tough one for me, okay. I guess in all the years that I've been on the planning board, and we've done different zoning bylaws and stuff, for me, this is the toughest one. When I read articles in, like, the Herald last week, from the Commissioner Evans and his concerns about overall these types of facilities in his community in Boston, understanding that's a little bit larger scale with population-wise, but still bringing it to a community like ours brings some of those same levels of concerns that he has, and that I have. This is one of those things where I believe that marijuana usage for people that are suffering in pain is, is the appropriate thing to do, and for them to have access to. But when it comes to the town of Lunenburg, this is one of the last uses I would like to see in the community, because I don't think it's representative of what we ultimately would want in the community. While I understand that there are some other states that are recognizing large rewards associated with the taxes and things they collect for the, for this, I don't know that it specifically benefits the specific community. So, but, so from an overall perspective, whether or not we had armed guards or what, made this secure, to me, this is one of those bylaws that if we didn't have to do this and make it available, it's one thing that I would never be, have any intention of bringing to the community, because I don't think it, it, it reflects the values that I think that we've had here, you know, and would bring the kinds of things that we, that we want in this community, so that's my personal opinion.
Toby, just a clarification, you're saying you wouldn't bring a medical facility, the medical dispensary, as it's currently defined, or are you talking about something else?
I, I would not be in favor of having a grow facility here, I would not be in favor of having a dispensary here. There are dispensaries that will be in air that are close enough and local enough for the members of this community to get to, to be able to, to get their medical marijuana if they want it. To me, in my opinion, it's, I just don't think it's an appropriate thing that I want to, I would want to see in this community, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say so. While I believe in the use for people that are, that are suffering and are in pain, I just don't see this as a, as what I would consider a viable option for the town of Lunenburg. Just personal opinion.
Yeah. Okay, and, and so with that, because I, people are going to be that or the other, there's, there's going to be the ones that are for it and the ones that aren't, but the state has said, you know, even if we had gotten the moratorium, the moratorium is only good till 2014, and then we would have to create the bylaw. So we're here at the bylaw, is there anything you could see to add or encompass in this to make it?
No, I, I think, I think that what we put together here for, for a bylaw and what the state is, is that because of the nature that we have to have one, I would support the bylaw, it's just something that I wish we could have avoid.
And I totally understand that.
The, the one thing that I have a concern about is that trying to force an armed security plan, other than being an armed security system, but putting armed guards in there, you know, to, to set that, and, and to have people of a, of a potentially criminal element that know that they're going to that know that they're going to come prepared for that type of thing, if they want to. If they want to commit a crime, they're going to do that. And I don't know that I would be in favor of having armed guards there, unless it was driven by a state or federal mandate. I wouldn't want to put that in the community, because I think it may just bring additional trouble that we, that the unintended consequences of that. So, that's just my, again, it's just my opinion, and that's how I feel about this particular bylaw.
Well, I thank you for your, your feedback on that.
Yeah, and that's a, that, that part, I think, is pretty important. I mean, you know, I appreciate your, your educating us about your general outlook on it, and I'm sure probably we could go down here and get five different, you know, personal opinions.
But I think we all, we all meet on the same one, that we're, we're not saying that medical marijuana should not be given to people that need medical marijuana. I, I think we can all agree on that.
Yep.
That's throughout this board, and it's never been about, no, we don't want people that need this to not get it. Even the moratorium, we've never had that mind thought.
Absolutely. No, I mean, absolutely. I guess the, the last part, you're talking about, about the armed, armed guard. It sounds like, you know, that's, we still got some time on this one, so I, I'm not totally, you know, locked in on that either, but I feel like it's a good, I can't think of any other mechanism right now, given our situation.
We have to have the discussion.
Exactly, that's what I'm trying to say.
We have to have the discussion. So I think it's a valid discussion point.
And then that's mine, is, is, once I hear back if Joel says we can.
Yep.
Then I, I'd like to hear the public comment.
I'd also like to hear from the police chief again, to make sure he thinks it's a good idea.
Yeah. Okay, let me have Marjorie check.
However you want to cut the conversations that we have, I think the, the fact that a lot of this takes place in front of the camera, I think it just demonstrates that we have dialogue, and we look at all the possible alternatives when we're trying to put a bylaw together. So in, in my particular opinion, I, I think it speaks to the strength of the, of the board of, of putting out ideas and concepts that may not be typically thought of, but are out there at least for discussion. So I commend the other members of, of the board for, for doing those things.
Absolutely.
So.
Well, it's brainstorming. It's, it's thinking outside the box. It's something new. We don't know, and, and it's trying to think of all avenues. And I respect everybody's input on this immensely.
Yeah, and I think, you know, we're trying to, it grows aboard, and, you know, I think there's, you know, we, we all feel like there's been other situations, like with the solar thing, where maybe if we had just thought harder about some of the consequences, we could have saved the town some pain, and, you know, gotten a better initial bylaw, and that would have been good for everybody. The other issue is, I mean, this was an issue that was specifically brought directly to our attention by a member of our legal counsel who informed us that, from their perspective, this was on their radars, and issue arising from the specific context in which these things happened. So Kate Doyle of, who formed, you know, who, when she spoke to us, was of Copeland and Page, and I believe Copeland and Page would still say the same thing, that this is something, is a board you need, you want to be aware of, as you're looking to, you know, zone, to achieve the goals we're always trying to in terms of health, public safety, you know.
Absolutely.
Economic development, et cetera. So, yeah, thanks, Joy.
Damon, is there anything else you want to add?
No, I just want to kind of agree with Toby as far as the sentiments of, if we didn't have to do this, I wouldn't be for it at all, in Lunenburg, the same as he said. So I'm just, I would echo Toby's mentality.
And Nathan?
Oh, well, I guess since everybody's going off the record here, I guess, I mean, it's a little bit different position, I guess. I think if, I, you know, for good reasons, you know, different states are going at different speeds. I personally view, you know, marijuana use as a kind of personal, well, it's illegal, so right now it's an illegal choice. As far as, if this were to go, if you were in Colorado, I'd see it as a personal choice, something akin to alcohol consumption. This, the rest of the country has the benefit of watching Colorado and learning from how that process goes there. I personally, you know, in theory, if in the future that was legal in Massachusetts, this could be an agricultural opportunity for Lunenburg, and a, a business opportunity. That's not really what's in front of us right now. What's in front of us right now is the specific context around the specific legal framework in the state, and, you know, and these facilities with the different constraints of federal law, and the state law, and the price being what it is, which gives rise to a whole different set of issues. But that, like, just like Toby and Damon says, that's my personal thing. I'm not a promoter, that I don't advocate that people personally should use it for non-medical reasons, but I, I see it as a choice like, you know, like drinking alcohol or whatnot. So, so I just don't, I guess the reason I'm saying this is not that anyone really should care much what I think. I just want them to, I don't, I don't want people to feel like this is motivated, our board is motivated by, you know, a single unifying, you know, whatever, political, underlying political agenda or something. It's just, we all have different opinions on this, and we're all focused on the specific needs of this RMD thing in Massachusetts, regardless of where we're at on the broader issue.
Yeah. I, I guess my, my only, and this is probably my, my final point on this, is that we've always been asked or taxed with to bring good business to Lunenburg. So when you think about it, when we got Emerald Place, which I think is, is a decent development, we, we got a nice CVS to come with it. My question is, is I don't know, if you put one of these RMD facilities in the Commercial District, will it have a positive or will it have a negative effect on the growth of that Commercial District and bringing good business in? If there are, if there are mitigating circumstances where there are troubles with these locations and things like that, does it now then negate the overall development of that additional commercial property? So when I think of planning, I, I, I have to think in the context of the overall benefit to the community by taking certain actions. And this one is, there's just not enough data to know what the impact is, you know, and how it could ultimately impact the growth in our Commercial Districts by allowing these in. I don't know. I just don't know.
Just, yeah, I mean, that's, that's a fantastic point. And to that point, I'm glad that we've started to put in things like we have done in the last few years in the Commercial District, I think really help mitigate that. I mean, we've got stuff like this going back a long way, but things like the signage bylaw, and now the new design bylaw. And, you know, limitations and, you know, noise and this and that. I, they help, I think, mitigate the downside that the use of a particular establishment can have. Now with this one, I am worried, like you say, I think the safety impact in it is an issue.
Look, because we don't know.
We don't know. This is one of the ones where we, we truly don't know.
True, but I think we're doing a good job trying to, over time, reduce and manage the amount of unknowns through these other measures that we're putting in place as the planning board. So I feel good about that.
Thank you. So now, Nathan, just to clarify, on this, though, the bylaw itself, did you have any other?
No, I think the modifications we talked about today, in terms of the research and possible modification, the setbacks and buffers, I think that was a great conversation. I think the addition that Damon mentioned about, you know, adding, separating out requirement about that the fire and police approve the final security plan was, is a really good one. Did we, I feel, did we miss, was there another point that you had that we didn't capture in terms of security there? You wanted to bust that one out, and was there anything else? I thought there might, I felt like there was a second thing that I...
No.
And you wanted Jimmy to check on the armed guard, if he was okay with that, the chief himself?
Yeah, because he may not want a third person, I guess, in the mix there that he has to deal with when he shows up on the scene.
So I do have that to check, to make sure.
And an armed guard can also escalate the situation too farther than it would. So I just want to make sure it's okay with him.
It would be really valuable if he could join us at the public hearing, perhaps.
And we can invite both of them, both the chiefs again.
That would be great, yeah. Because the residents may have, you know, questions they want to direct, put directly to them as well. So beyond that, I mean, I do have, you know, I think if, I think it's a little early stages as far as the armed guard stuff goes. If we start to, as we figure out more about that, I think we might have to, you know, fine-tune that. But, so other than that, I'm, I'm good with the rest of it personally.
So with the, with the amendments we spoke of today, Marjorie will, will fix those, and then we will send this off to legal tomorrow, and try to get a response back from them as quickly as possible. So we'll be ready for the public hearing on the 24th. Does that work for everybody?
Yes. I just want to double-check one last thing. Yeah, that's great.
Okay. So that's good. Thank you for getting through that process. I know it's been agonizing, but it'll be worth it at the end. Warrant for the public hearing. You see Lunenburg, that's all set, ready to go. It's already been advertised. Whitetails Crossing. Now, what, what happened with Whitetails Crossing is Danny Proctor wants to get on this town warrant for the road and get the road approved by the town of Lunenburg. So the issue is the snow, and our peer review engineer and Jack Rodickins, the highway, can't go and check all the requirements they need to, to make sure it's acceptable. But you got to get on the warrant by a date that the snow's still here. So what we've done is we recommended that he get a pla, we had Danny put a place card holder on the warrant, because worst, worst case, if it doesn't get on the warrant, we could just pass over it at a town meeting. But we didn't want him to miss his opportunity to not be on the warrant. So, and we're working with Jesse and Jack to, as the snow melts, be able to go. Jesse did a preliminary, and everything looks good, but he has to look at the gravel, the grave, and all of that, which he can't do while all the snow is here. So that was the issue with Whitetails Crossing, and that's what we've done for that as of yet.
So do we want to, so, Marjorie sent a memo around, and I mistakenly thought the memo was, like, from last meeting, and I'm like, what? We didn't talk about it. We didn't do this. Do we want to take some kind of motion? I, I'd have to reread the memo, but it's, is it like conditionally approving it based on, you know, positive recommendation from our reviewing engineer?
Uh, no, because all we have to do is, once the peer review goes out and Jack goes out, they'll both say yes, you know, everything looks good, it's okay to approve, or Jack or Jesse will say no. Danny still has to, or, you know, the developer has to fix A, B, and C before it can do that.
Okay.
So until we get that back from them.
Got it.
That's when we would vote on the recommendation that
Okay.
the road is, is ready and acceptable to be, become a town road.
So the memo's not going out?
This memo is going out to, just letting them know what we're doing.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, no, she is asking me, recommended to accept the street. Right. That, it's the planning board's understanding that Mr. Proctor will be seeking application for approval. Therefore, the planning board is conditionally approving the plan to facilitate Mr. Proctor putting a place card holder. That's what we're facilitating, is that he can put a place card holder on that.
Okay, so do we want, so this looks good. Do you want to send it around to the, maybe they've already read it.
Yep.
But do we want a motion to...
Put the place card holder on.
Put the place card holder and support the intent of the memo here.
Yeah, we can do that, just for the record, if you'd like, sure.
Yeah, because it does say that we conditionally recommend it.
Yep.
So I'll make, just while you guys are reading that, we can have discussion afterwards. I'm going to make the motion to approve the memo as put together there, which is to go to the Board of Selectmen and talk about how we're supportive of that place card going on the warrant, and will, you know, conditional upon, you know, review that it's appropriate by Jesse and Jack, that we would, if those conditions are met, we'd approve, we'd recommend approval of accepting the roadways for maintenance by the town.
Thank you. And do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay. There was something to that, Elmwood, I wanted to, I probably could have brought up when I on Elmwood, but I did not. Mike Savageo. Okay. Mike Savageo, the building zoning officer, sent a letter to Anthony Cleaves, Whitney and Bingham Engineers, 510 Mechanic Street, Leominster, Mass. 01453, regarding Elmwood subdivision. Dear Anthony, at your request, I have reviewed the general bylaw of the town of Lunenburg, and have found that the approved subdivision for Michael Crowley, signed by the planning board and dated February 24th, 2014, is exempt from requirements of an earth removal permit under Article 9, Section 9, Number 12 of the general bylaw. If you have any questions in regard to this correspondence, please feel free to contact me. Respectfully, Michael Savageo. So what they're saying is based on Article 9, Section 9, Number 12, and Matthew's getting his book out, so he could read that.
Mine only goes up to eight.
Is that the general town bylaw?
Yes, the general bylaw, general town bylaw.
Yeah, it wouldn't be.
It's, okay.
That's the rules and rights.
I have the protective.
This is a protective bylaw.
Oh, okay.
It's not the general towns bylaws.
Okay. But, so that's, Anthony must have read that question, Mike, checked it. And so because of the subdivision, they do not have to get the, or, because it's in the subdivision, they don't have to get it. So that was clarified by Mike Savageo. And I wanted everybody to know that.
So can I just reiterate the, the impact on the town from that was, what was that? The, the 10-yard trucks every two minutes for two months?
Good love, Marjorie, she gave it to me right here. Exemptions. This ordinance shall be constructed to apply to any such removal incident to the construction or altercation of any structure for which a building permit has been issued, or to the removal incident to the installation of any cesspool or septic tank for which a permit has been issued by the Board of Health or the grading or development of any approved subdivision or public way.
So does that read, if we approve a subdivision, then it doesn't have to go through the...
Basically. It basically sounds like it's applied, like, I got my yard, and I just start removing, I got my land, and I just start removing a ton of gravel. That's when it applies. That's what it looks like here.
So it would only actually apply to someone who is only looking to sell gravel and not build something there?
Yeah, that's another way of putting it.
That's a pretty weak bylaw.
Yeah.
But that's what...
It's a targeted bylaw.
How is that headed? What is the na, the name of that section?
Exemptions, Number 12, exemptions.
But was it, was it a gravel removal, or was it an earth removal, or was it a removal?
I think that, that sounds like that's more in tune with the removal of overburden in, in the residential subdivision.
Right, take for the cesspool.
Than being explicit to something that's being mined for gravel or what have you. So I don't know what the overall intent is of what they're planning on removing from that site. I don't know if it's a gravel field that they've...
Well, they're regrounding a significant portion of the site to make it work.
Yeah. How significant?
Pretty significant.
Pretty significant. So is it really a gravel permit, or is it really the removal of overburden?
It's not necessarily, oh, it's 10-foot cuts, it's not overburden.
So, I guess I have a question on whether or not that still shouldn't be reviewed.
Well, do you want, because Mr. Savageo told, it didn't come through us. Mr. Savageo, Anthony requested this from Mr. Savageo, and Mr. Savageo, the zoning officer, responded to him and gave a copy to the planning board. So do we want to have Mr. Savageo come to the meeting and talk to us about this? We can ask him, invite him to our meeting?
Can I just see if the way is written?
Okay.
And what all is this, so what is this, what is the, this is waiving the need to modify the town of... to notify the town of a schedule for their trucks, or what exactly is...
Well, they need to go in front, if my understanding is correct, Mrs. Bertram came at the meeting and stated that they would need to get an earth removal permit, which we weren't aware of, and Paula had pointed that out.
I gotta tell you, I'm very concerned about that decision, because the question that I asked at the planning board meeting was, was this going to be for commercial resale? And the answer was yes. My concern is, we had a situation where an individual came forward, they were building one home, and because of the volume of material that they were removing, Mr. Savageo required they get an earth removal permit. So I'm a little bit concerned as to why this decision is different, and I'm very concerned, as Mr. Allison said, about the volume of trucks that you're talking about and the significant topography changes that are going to, that are going to be required. We're talking about, I believe, I thought it was 50,000 cubic yards or something of material from this piece of property. So I, as a member of the Board of Selectmen, I'm going to recommend tomorrow night that we follow up with Mr. Savageo and have him in, because I'm very concerned about that decision.
And, and we just got the letter. Like I said, we got a copy of the, the letter he sent to...
You know, as was pointed out by Mr. Allison at a previous meeting, the number of trips that we're talking about in a residential area are astronomical, and, and the amount of material being removed, you know, typically an earth removal permit would require the plan before, the plan after, and restrictions can be placed as to the operation, and I think it is something that would require an earth removal permit. So I do, now, you know, I heard you just read the bylaw, and certainly it does exempt subdivisions, but because of the volume of material and because it is not, it's not incidental to development, it is an operation in and of itself. So I do intend to follow up on it.
Yeah, and, and we can, as I said, as Mr. Savageo comes to the 24th meeting to talk to us about it.
While I'm concerned about the outcome, I, reading the bylaw, I can't really question Mr. Savageo's ruling, because it's pretty clear in the bylaw, that's what he's saying. So I, I'm not happy about the outcome either, but I can't really argue with his ruling.
A subdivision to take a look at, to see what we did with was when they did Houghton's Mill back in the day. I know there were, that was a gravel field, and I know there was tremendous amounts of gravel taking out of there, so I would go and, and see whether or not they, they fell under the requirement of having a...
Okay, I will, and I'm curious as to why the, the building of the home on Flat Hill Road, perhaps because he didn't obtain the building permits prior to the removal, and maybe that's the issue, is maybe, you know, that's the question that I have, is typically if you, you have a certain amount of time to execute that building permit, and I think it's six months, so I don't know whether they're planning on getting the building permits and doing this operation that quickly, or, because what I think I heard you just saying, and I want to look at it myself, is that if it's part of the issuance of a building to permit or a, but, but then again, it says subdivision. So, you know, I really want to look at it, and I thank you for the advice on looking at Houghton's Mill. I definitely will do that.
I think moving forward, we would either want to readdress that bylaw, or spend more time during our approval process, looking at earth removal, because we kind of started touching on it, and then we said, "Oh, no, the Selectmen have to look at it anyway." So we didn't spend that much time on it, whereas clearly it's an issue in this project.
I agree.
I think there's got to be some clearer definitions as to what overburden is and what, you know, defines overburden, what, you know, if there's any specificity to that as to, you know, what the range is for overburden versus earth removal.
So I'm on board with what you guys are saying. Right now, the bylaw on question isn't within the planning board's purview, if I understand. Now, we could address this perhaps in our regulations, but maybe if we're serious about planning this, we need to maybe coordinate a strategy with, I mean, is this under Board of Selectmen's purview of these regulations, or who?
Well, I, I do, Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
See if there's anything in the finding and directives for the Houghton's Mill project way back in the day as to whether or not there was any requirement for an earth removal permit for that. I don't know if there was or there wasn't, but, you know, see if there was any other information relative to that project.
Well, and, and, you know, for me reading it, talked about septic, you know, because they're taking the gravel out for septic systems, but we know they're doing a lot more than that with the gravel they're taking out. So where they kept, we waived four or five things for them, because they kept saying, "We're only eight houses, so we're really not a subdivision. We're a small subdivision." So they asked for all those waivers. So, you know, maybe in the directives, we can put that we still want you to get, because so much gravel is going out, that we, we would like you to get a, a earth removal. Yeah, they had no problem asking us for the five waivers that we waived, and we, you know.
Again, this is one of those, this tough ones is to, relative to who has ownership for that piece, you know, is that really the building official enforcement officers' ultimate decision? And it, and it very well may be, but I think we have a responsibility to look at past subdivisions that we did.
And I'll pull the finding and directives for Houghton's.
Of civil, similar nature, so.
Yep. I will have her pull that.
I would, I would like to suggest a, a third one to look at in, in recent past, is about 10 years ago, was the subdivision on Flat Hill. It's in very close proximity to the quest, the one in question, very similar soil materials. I don't know what they had for removal there, but...
Which one was that?
Flat, yeah, Courtland Circle.
Yeah, Flat, Flat Hill was in the extensive...
No, it was pretty flat.
I know, I know, I know, I know Houghton's Mill was, because I know there was a bunch of gravel being removed from there. Gee, I built the home in there.
Okay. Meeting schedule. Our next meeting is going to be a public hearing for our medical bylaw. That's March 24th, 6:30 here at Town Hall. Then we will have a meeting April 14th and a meeting April 20th. Town Caucus, don't forget, is Monday, March 17th, so make sure you're there. Do we have any board comments?
I'm all talked out.
Okay, do we have any public comments? Oh, come on up.
I just want to comment that you guys, the public hearing is the 24th, and at the Board of Selectmen meetings, we've talked about having a workshop with you guys to talk about a number of issues, including the proposed bylaw, and we'd like to have that prior to the public hearing. We'd also like to talk about, and I don't know if any of you have heard, I'm concerned with some of the drainage projects and the, and the cost to the town for these projects on the subdivisions. And, and as you guys all know, the dollars are dwindling, and especially with a new school, it's going to be tighter and tighter. And my concern is the, the cost of an already overburden DPW. So we had talked about that last Tuesday, and I think it's just something, even if we can just, Dave Matthews made a suggestion, maybe we can have some sort of standardized, you know, storm drainage system, so that we have the equipment we need to maintain it, or, but I think it's important that the DPW, the planning board, and the, and the Board of Selectmen get together and talk about this. I think that, you know, to prevent what happened at the last town meeting, having a workshop to talk about the bylaw. So I don't know if the town manager's been in touch with you yet, but is something...
No, I, I've emailed her, asking her, because we can meet at a workshop six to seven before your Selectmen meeting.
Okay.
Or if, I didn't know if it would be longer, and you would want us the Tuesday of the last of the month where the sewers here.
Okay.
And, and meet with you that evening. So I emailed Carrie last week on that, and I, I don't know if she's going to check with all of you tomorrow night.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'll bring it up tomorrow, but I think it's important that we schedule that pretty quick, so.
But whatever, whatever works for you guys. If, if you want us to come at 5:30, 6 o'clock before your regular Tuesday, or take that last Tuesday, you just let us know, and I'll let my board know as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I actually did have some comment.
Yeah, I'm coming to the board, I do publicly in the board, board comments?
Oh. I thought you asked about that first. Anyways, I was just following up, Nathan had suggested that it would be interesting to see about the site distances, what the increases, referring to the force corp. I went and I researched that, I printed up the material. The 280, the 280 feet required for a 25 mile an hour design speed is for a passenger car pulling out of the driveway and making a left turn, for a passenger car. Now, the entrance that we were talking about was not for passenger cars, it was for commercial vehicles, trucks, tractors, trailers. The stopping site distance required was 155 feet for the person coming at 25 miles an hour towards them. Now, when you go up to 30 miles an hour design speed, the, the site distance that was 280 feet goes up to 335 feet. And the required stopping distance is 200 feet for the vehicle approaching at 30 miles an hour. And when you get up to 35 miles an hour speed, the site distance required is 390, 110 more than they were under by 35 feet. And the stopping site distance to stop, traveling at 35 miles an hour, is 250 feet. Now, they said that they had 235 feet, so if there was a vehicle traveling at 35 miles an hour, that came around the corner at the precise time that one of these tractor-trailers decided to pull out, they're saying, this, now this is from ASHTO, American Association of State and Highway Transportation Officials, and what our review engineer had quoted as a suggested minimum is actually required safe distance, as reported by ASHTO. I did not bring these up, these were, these are common knowledge for me. I did not bring them up because of the peer reviews comment that they were just suggested minimums. They're not, this, this documentation enforces that. And, and as I was saying, if you're traveling at 35 miles an hour, 10 miles an hour over the posted, the other thing is, the nearest posted limit to that site is three miles. In Shirley, it says 25. And then the next, the next one on the other side is one mile away, it's in Leominster, and it says 35. Neither one of them are in the town of Lunenburg. So regardless, I mean, the, the distance that's on the plan is for a passenger vehicle, which is inappropriate, because they're private exit for contractor vehicles, commercial vehicles. And, and the site distance is, is just barely adequate for a person to come to a complete stop without hitting the vehicle that's pulling out. So that was just a follow-up on that information, and you're welcome to look at it if you'd like. I printed up the definitions.
Thank you. Okay, any other board comments?
Well, yeah, so actually, I had the same, same topic he had, I just want to follow up on the signage. We've talked about maybe getting something into Jack about that, so thanks for bringing that up. I mean, site distance is pretty serious, and then stopping distance is basically what, for a typical vehicle, the distance it requires to come to a full stop. So that's, that's pretty serious stuff, like it means. Yes, even if you see it and you want to stop, and the thing's pulling out, you can't stop, so that's kind of bad news. So I think that kind of underscores the importance of us having the conversation with Jack, and I'm sure he, the last thing he needs is another issue to deal with, but, and starting the conversation with the Mass DOT to see, so that we can get some, some good signage posted there. And, I mean, the, the numbers Matt's talking about, I mean, I, you know, for what it's, I would understand, just say I agree with him about the seriousness of this, is a safety issue, and, you know, it might merit a 25 mile an hour speed limit sign with flashing yellow lights. Honestly, like, like it's that serious. And some description of why, you know, you know, maybe a description, explain to drivers why it's 25, like, you know, whatever, trucks, whatever, I don't know what, I'm sure the DOT has suggested signage for this type of situation. But, yeah, we really, just like, you know, it's, once this traffic really starts to get active there, then they don't just make those numbers up. Those are the Traffic Highway Safety, the national organization, and it's going to be not only depressing, I don't know, we'll all feel awful if something happens, if we could have done something and we didn't. So, yeah, I would, could we put like an action item on Marjorie's plate, or is there somehow do we make this happen with Jack?
Yeah, we can ask Marjorie to see if Jack can have some kind of signage posted there with the speed limit.
That'd be great. That would, that would be great.
If I recall, we asked to, to do the same thing before we approved that force corp?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, okay.
We did.
And, and another thing to talk about, Jack, with would be our regulation, our, the waivers that we allow to be granted to some of these smaller subdivisions for roads that later become public. It's very common for the boundary markers, the bound, the permanent boundaries, to be omitted or waived. Those, those are, those are very important for the townspeople, the laborers when they're working. If they need to expand or they need to do something within the right of way, they need to be able to readily identify where the divider is between public and private property. And likewise with, with personal private property owners, to, to, to be able to see, well, this is, this is the line here, this is my property, and this is the town's property. And when you, when you buy a piece of land, you get a piece of paper that's got plan, that's got lines on it, but when you go physically to the property, it's, it's not the same as looking down at a piece of paper, and it's very easy to misjudge some distances. And, and I mean, it's just blatantly obvious where town property is versus private property if these permanent boundaries are in place. And I would like to get Jack's input on that as well.
Are you talking about the drainage maintenance easement?
Well, specifically the, the Whitetail Crossing, because they were waived on that project.
White, Whitetail Crossing, what was, Whitetail Crossing, what was with...
Well, that's coming up, that was one we just suggested to the Selectmen, the recommendation to Select Board for street acceptance.
Okay, which boundaries are you talking about, just so I understand?
Well, the, the requirement for permanent boundary markings is, is at property lines intersecting the roadway. Where, where the, where private property abuts public property along a road, basically. So if you've got a, like, let's, let's use Elmwood for an example. They did not ask for the waiver. I don't know if it's required, it's not required for less than 10 lots.
So you mean like something indicating like at the end of a driveway, that...
The boundary markers, the shortage boundary markers along the public way.
Okay. Did, did demarcate the beginning of the public way, or...
Yeah, their, their property boundary versus the public way.
Okay, I got you, I got you, okay.
And I'm not entirely sure that it's, that it's, it's an even, an important issue to, to, to the DPW, but I would like to, to ask them if it is, and to take that into consideration when we're, when we're looking at granting these waivers for things that, that we apparently don't know all that much about.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, I think, I would imagine that like we consulted with DPW on this, for example, this Elmwood subdivision about the drainage, I would imagine they were consulted about, I mean, it's pretty typical practice to consult.
Well, yes, and I would, I didn't want to cut anybody off, but I would hope that we pay, the developer pays for a peer engineer that is on the, the town side that goes and makes sure all that happens. And, and for example, as I said, with Whitetail Crossing, Jack is going to meet with our peer review engineer, Jesse Johnson, as soon as the snow has melted, to make sure everything is supposed to be done, that our, our bylaws say should be done with that before we accept that road.
But the stuff you're talking about, Matt, is stuff that happened when the subdivision was approved. They were waived.
Right, part of, part of the plan, and I wasn't here at the time, but the, the applicant requested that we waive, that the board waive the requirement for boundary markers.
For Whitetail Crossing?
Whitetail Crossing.
Okay, I, I couldn't say yes or no to that.
And I'm not positive, as many projects as we come across, and as many issues as I've had with all of them, that that was the specific one, but I know for a fact that it was one up and coming for a public acceptance of a roadway, and I'm pretty sure it was that. I can certainly look through my notes, but...
Yeah, I can't, I can't answer that. I can't say if we waived it or not off the top of my head.
Which is fine. I, the, the issue that I'm trying to address here is that the common sense, commonplace of, of waiving certain requirements that are in the bylaw, and we seem to, at this point, simply waive them because we typically waive them, and that that's, that's how the, the engineers, the applicants come to us. They ask us, "Well, we're gonna, we're gonna ask you to waive this one, this one, this one, because, because it's less than 10 lots, and since it's commonly asked for, and because you guys always give it," that's not a good reason.
I hear what you're saying. I mean, I'd like to think we take the waivers pretty seriously, you know? And I think, yeah, but I do think there are mitigating factors with, with lot size and the nature of the project, but I hear what you're saying. I think we do, we can't give any waiver without careful consideration. I'm totally, I'm bored with you on that. If you're saying we should not waive anything...
No, that's not at all.
Okay, no, I, no, I think, is that what you're saying, is basically give careful consideration to these?
I think, I think, right. There should be an understanding of, first of all, why was it in the bylaw as a requirement if it's always waived, or regularly waived, or if it's a commonplace... If it's always waived or regularly waived or if it's a commonplace to ask for the waiver.
I think one thing you'll find is in terms of bylaws and what we can do is in general, if you're writing a bylaw, you'd rather, if it's not in there, if, even if you're going to waive it 80% of the time, if it's important to enforce 20% of the time, you better have it in the bylaw because otherwise you got nothing. So that might be, that's probably part of the process.
Well, and I, I think, I just want to piggyback on that because I think waivers that come in front of us, we do take very seriously. And I'll take Elmwood, two of them for three meetings. We said, no, we weren't going to answer that till we heard from Conservation. And we asked Conservation to come to our meeting and specifically give their recommendation on us waiving that. So it's not that we just, oh yeah, sure. We, we spent three weeks talking on those five waivers and two of them, like I said, took three meetings and two visits from Conservation before we waived them. So I, I think we, we look at them.
Well, in my, in my, in my, in my opinion, what you just said was that we were hanging our hat on approving that on what Conservation had to say about one of our bylaws.
No, it was about things that were due to the wetlands that were impacting the, that, the plan that we would approve.
Well, the maximum length of 650 feet for a dead end road has nothing to do with Conservation, the requirement of it.
Okay. Well, it did because we were looking.
In that instance, it did, yes.
Right. And we were looking for that, the, the Conservation trail in the back, right?
Oh, I don't know what the trail. I was looking at the impacts on the wetlands, not the trail. The trail already, there was already a trail. It wasn't on his property, but.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, move with your turn.
Well, we'll just have to see if anybody else has comments. Nathan, Damon?
I just, I had one real quick thing. As it won't take long, I don't think. It might have already gotten against force corp we talked about. And it's not important. This is just adjourned. I can take, we can talk about it.
Well, no, I want you to be able to express your comment.
Are we, I was just curious, any update on the social media policy from Carrie?
Not as of yet.
Not as of yet? Okay.
Not as of yet. But when we have our workshop, we can check with her on that too.
Fantastic. Thank you. I will keep.
I can't guarantee I'll remember it all, so you remember the social network. Okay, anything else? Nathan?
Uh, no, thank you very much.
I am, I just want to quickly, I did have to keep you in the loop. I did have a meeting today with Carrie and Marjorie with the MRPC. And we have someone, Marion is still out. So we have someone that's going to come from MRPC. She'll come work in the office probably four hours, two days a week. And then she'll be here for the planning board meetings. You've met her and I apologize. I think it was Shayna, the girl that came with the village bylaw and was talking to us with the, the village bylaw that works over an MRPC. So she's going to be kind of our liaison helping us until Marion gets back. And Thursday, this Thursday, we're going in front of, I'm going in front of the finance committee to do our budget. And I'm asking them for kind of more of a director of land use versus a planning director that will kind of oversee planning, conservation, board of health, that will be able to have weekly, monthly meetings with all the groups. So everybody's talking, conservation, border health, planning board. They, they all know where the plan is, who's got what, who's waiting for what, and kind of facilitate both administratively as well as making sure everybody's working together for that, that plan. And everybody's talking to everybody. So we all know what Conservation's doing. So that's something that we put in the budget for this, this year that I'm going to talk to finance about on Thursday. So those are a couple of things that I've been working on with, with Carrie to, to have done.
Follow-up question?
Yes.
What, what, what other positions in town are assigned to the planning director position? Like, like capital planning chair? That's de facto, right?
Those are her committees. Yeah, she has committees she's under.
So what are they that's capital planning?
I can't, I can't tell you all of them off my head what she's on. I know she's on capital planning, the Green Task Force.
She's the chair of capital planning, right? As the planning director?
I don't know if she is the chair. She, I think Ernie Sun was the chair last year. I don't know who became the chair this year, Matthew. I, I don't think it was Marion. I, I do not think Marion is the chair of that committee. And I know last year it was Ernie Sun.
And then the Green Community Task Force?
Again, she is not the chairperson. She was like a liaison to that. And I, I don't know if there's other committees. I know she used to go to meet. Open Space.
Technical Advisory Committee with her and Jack, right? Tech, technical advisory committee?
The tech review meetings, is that what you're?
I've only got the 2012 town report to go by is the only thing I can find. And the 2012 town report specifies her as the chair of capital planning and one of two people on the technical advisory committee and the Green Community.
Yeah, the Green Communities I know she's on.
Open Space I wasn't aware of. The 40S officer, right, for the tri-town, the.
Yeah, she was.
So there's five things. I'm sure there's more, right?
I would think so, but, but what's the question?
Well, it's not just the planning director and, and you're, you're, you're suggesting expanding it. And I, and I don't disagree with the idea of expanding. I think it's a good idea to expand it to include an overview of the land boards. It sounds like a great idea. Much needed, I think, to kind of tie them all together.
Exactly.
Very good. I was just curious on those different aspects and I thought that they deserve mention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that is all I had. So Toby, I would now, we have to go into an executive session. So with that.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we come out of our regular session to go into executive session and not to return.
Second.
And we will be going into executive session in accordance with MGL C30A number 21A3 to discuss strategy to respect the litigation of O'Brien Homes versus town of Lunenburg. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body and the chair so declares. Sure.
The man that was here in the very beginning, Jamie.
Jamie Rowe?
Because that piece was his first published piano concerto, it took the number one in the catalog.